Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Please stand for our pledge of allegiance and her name standing for our new location by Councilmember Ben Gray.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City clerk certified publication on the daily record on February 22nd, noted review council and regular city council meeting February 26, 2013. Current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Resolution item number five, resolution, city council of city Omaha does hereby recognize the Omaha Public Library and the Omaha Children's Museum for their contributions to the Omaha community and for their enhancing quality of life in our community.
Public hearing on agenda item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer this resolution in recognition of two Omaha points of life. He became finalist for the National Medal for Museum and Library Service. This award is sponsored by the Institute of Museum and Library Services. It is the highest honor conferred on museums and libraries for their outstanding service to their community. The Omaha Public Library and the Omaha Children's Museum are among 33 finalists for the award. Would their representatives please come down to the podium while they're making their way? Ten winners of the award will be announced at a ceremony in Washington DC in April. In addition to the gold medal, each winner will receive a $5,000 award and a visit from Story Corps, a national nonprofit dedicated to the recording, preserving, and sharing of stories of Americans. Would you like to make some remarks?
I would, thank you very much. I'm Lindy Hoyer, I'm the director of the Omaha Children's Museum, 500 South 20th Street in Omaha. And I first of all, I want to thank you, Councilman Gernat, for preparing this and bringing us here with this resolution. We're very honored to be one of 33 finalists for the Medal of Honor this year through the IMLS. And we're especially honored to be joined by our friends from the Omaha Public Library. It's quite unique to see a city that has both a museum and its public library system, both honored and serving as finalist in the same year. So we're thrilled to be called out in our field as for the excellent work we do. And I think it's a testament to the community of Omaha in supporting excellence and asking all of us in the museum and in our public libraries to strive for the best. So thank you so much for this resolution today and for letting us be here. We are very, very proud and very honored to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Stuart Chittenden, the president of the Board of Trustees of the library. I would echo Lindy's comments and also thank you very much for applauding both the library and the children's museum and what they're doing for the community here. I do think it is remarkable, as Lindy said, that both the museum and the library from Omaha are being recognized in this way. It's a real testament to just really the quite remarkable contributions that are being made by both of these institutions to the community and really an indicator of just the magnificent value that they are offering to Omaha. Of course, the real applause goes to the staff and the management of both of those institutions. So I would thank you for your recognition, but definitely applaud the staff at the museum and at the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that we owe them a round of applause for becoming finalists. Good luck to both of you. Thank you again, Mr. President.
Most of the approval.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, I also just wanted to thank Councilman Gernat for putting this on. And I wanted to give a public thanks also to the public library and also the children's museum and maybe particularly the children's museum as a former board member involved with their work. Really glad to see this honor upon them. And a lot of people don't know, but the children's museum is the most visited museum in the entire state. That's a big deal for Omaha, not only for kids and families, but economically speaking, that impact it has for us. And I always say every great city has a great children's museum and I'm pleased to say that we do as well. So I, of course, will support the resolution and want to congratulate everybody involved. Thanks.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Zoning ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments will take items six, seven, eight to one case. Six is ordinance to rezone property located east of 99th Street and south of Reddick Avenue from LI to R7 medium density multi-family residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is an ordinance to approve a development agreement for public improvements. We have a request to lay this over three weeks and continue the public hearing until March 19th.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over three weeks, seven to zero. Item number nine, ordinance to rezone property located at 822 Pacific Street from HI to Central Business District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number 10, ordinance to rezone property located at 604 South 22nd Street from DS to Central Business District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number 11, ordinance to rezone property located at 6124 Military Avenue from General Industrial District to Neighborhood Business District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Items 12 through 14 is one case. 12 is ordinance to rezone property located at 72nd Street and Northern Hills Drive from Development Reserve and Aviation District to Development Reserve District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 13 is the plat entitled Northern Hills Estates 2 is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 14 is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12, 13, and 14 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street in Omaha. Here to request approval of rezoning from DR to AV and approval of our final plat and subdivision agreement. And we are under conditional approval and have met those conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero. Items 15 through 18 is one case. 15 is ordinance to rezone property located southeast 168th and Fort Streets from Air Culture District to DR Development. District 16 is to rezone to R6 Slow Density Multi-Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 17 is the plat entitled Cooper Valley is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend. And 18 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 15, 16, 17, and 18 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street in Omaha, requesting to approve all rezoned property from AG to DR and AG to R6 in our final plan subdivision agreement under conditional approval, met those conditions, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number 19, resolution, the preliminary plat entitled Omaha Home for Boys Replat 1 located southeast of 52nd Street and Ames Avenue along attached conditions, never accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Dan Dolezal with Eric Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham. I've been involved with many cool projects in my career and this is one of the coolest. This plat represents the end of a long road for us to get to this point. You'll see a lot of activity. I've got Scott Hazelwig in the audience that's going to make a presentation in a minute. Basically, we're just combining and bringing together some various pieces of property for the Omaha Home for Boys that also incorporates this project. With that, I'll let Scott speak.
Thank you, Dan. My name is Scott Hazelwig. I'm with the North Star Foundation, 5076 Ames Avenue. We are pleased today to be at this point and I'd like to thank and acknowledge both Jeff DeWisperly, who's the chief operating officer, and Dan Wellendorf, who are the board chairs for the Omaha Home for Boys. The North Star Foundation has leased from the Omaha Home for Boys land on the eastern side of that campus to be able to construct a new facility to serve youth, male youth in northeast Omaha. We, in partnership with the Omaha Home for Boys, are thrilled about the other things that are happening in the area. The Walmart across the street, which will involve about a $30 million capital investment. Heartland Family Service Project, which is just to the east of this site, is about an $11 million project and ours in total capital will be between 10 and 11 million. The opportunity to see about $50 million of new capital investment at 50, the names is a significant development in this part of our community and we appreciate your support today.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's a really good statement, but an understatement as to how cool this project really is. And I'd like to thank all of those from Omaha Home for Boys and everyone, and Scott Hazelwig and everyone at the North Star Foundation for seeing the vision, being involved in the vision, and then making this vision happen. I think it's going to make a significant difference for a lot of young men across the community, but specifically in the northeast Omaha area. So again, thank you all and I move approval.
Mr. Festerson.
Yeah, I just want to echo those sentiments. It's very cool. And it appears to be a simple item that's before us today, but it really wasn't simple at all. It took a long time in the coming and a fairly complicated transaction regarding this plat to get where we are today, not to mention the fundraising and all the private entities involved in this project that will make a great product for North Omaha and for the entire city. So I'm anxious to have privilege today too. Thanks.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I want to echo the echoed statement. And I want to also say that I am very proud to have both entities, Omaha Home for Boys and North Star, as city partners. They're out there doing something, folks. They're on the streets actually working with our kids, which is our most precious resource. And back in my olden days when I had an Afro, I used to volunteer for the Omaha Home for Boys. And then, of course, North Star is looking to re, to bring back the whole concept of a boys' club, only expanded. And the old boys' club is something that helped raise me and gave me character. So once again, bless you, thank you and bless you, and thank you for being a great community partner.
Let me try to picture that, Dr. Teague.
Yeah, me too, that Afro thing.
I've got a picture in my office.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just, it seems like just a few months ago, it's been actually probably a year or two ago, council and Gray, we went on a lunchtime tour. I think Mr. Mulligan might have been along with us. When we were driving by the area, your neighborhood to the east, Scott, it looks like something that you might have seen on TV in Sarajevo after the Croatian War. I mean, these buildings were bombed out, hellholes of drug dealers, of all kinds of problems you can imagine. And it's such a wonderful thing to see this rise from the ashes and be transformed into something that's going to be an asset for the community. So I applaud the work you're doing and the boards and the donors that are making this happen to help you do that.
Yeah, and once again, I mean, here's another really good example of the benefits. You know, Omaha has got some very, very generous individuals, citizens that live here. And, you know, we should all be very thankful for, you know, projects such as this. With that, roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. We'll take items 20 through 22 as one case. 20 is resolution, preliminary plat entitled 96th and J Plaza located southeast of 96th and J Streets along attached conditions, never accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 21 is the plat entitled 96th and J Plaza is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 22 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 20, 21, and 22 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Lee Harmon, 1601 Dodge Street, Omaha, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I would just ask for your approval and if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're both adopted seven to zero. Items 23 and 24, one case. 23 is resolution, the request for, the request of legacy primary for a variance from the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the master plan for property located southeast 168th and 90th Streets is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 24 is the preliminary plat entitled Camp Legacy Place along attached conditions, never accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 23 and 24 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. We're here to request a variance to the present development zone on a piece of property that we are asking for approval on preliminary plat. Present zone development kind of cuts through the middle of it. We're under conditional approval for this project and we've met those conditions and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 25, resolution, preliminary plat entitled Canterbury South located northeast 199th and K Street along attached conditions, never accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Brian Doyle, 11440 West Center Road. Here today on behalf of the applicant, also with me is John Coolidge from Lampard Neersen, the engineers for the project, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule 70, agenda items number 26 through 30 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to city council rule 70, agenda item number 31 shall be laid over for two weeks. 32, resolution, special use permit application submitted by RSTG for a special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in a general industrial area located at 135 Scott Circle is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 32 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to city council rule 7E, agenda items number 33 through 34 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 35, Safari's Cigar and Lounge, 13110 Birch Drive, Suite 108. Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 35 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, William McGinn, 20 North 16th Street, council blocks and the attorney for JD Fine Cigars LLC. With me is Jeff Dahl, the owner of JD Fine Cigars LLC. And we're asking today that you adopt a resolution to grant our request for a liquor license. And if you have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dahl if you have any questions about what he has in mind. Essentially, we're going to run it as the property has been run in the past, just better as far as, as far as a cigar bar under Nebraska's cigar bar law. And Mr. Dahl is here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you. Roll call. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. We'll take items 36 and 37 for one public hearing. They're both owned by the same company. 36 is JC Mandarin, 843 North 98th Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location. And 37 is the same applicant at 2859 South 168th Street for a Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 36 and 37 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Sharon Hansen, 12020 Shamrock Plaza here in Omaha, Nebraska, and legal counsel for the owner, Mr. Chin and Ms. Grace Song, who's the manager of the restaurant. It's a, actually, it's a two-location restaurant. We represented the buyer, Mr. Chin, who's in the audience, in a purchase of an existing restaurant. So if you have any questions, Ms. Song is here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just one question for you. The 98th Street location's in my district and I just wanted to see, did you say this means a change in ownership or what's exactly happening here?
Yes, there's been a change in ownership.
Okay. I'll also just add that this is one of my little girl's favorite restaurants in town, JC Mandarin at 98th Street.
I bring a menu, you guys all could come to the restaurant. It's a fine dine restaurant.
It sure is. And I told them this morning on the way out that that was on my city council agenda today and they said I better vote for it, so I'll move the approval.
It's a good food. It's the best in Omaha.
Very good.
Yeah, fine dine, yes.
Roll call. Gernat.
Oh, come on.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
It's for 36, 37. 38 is Element Omaha at Midtown Crossing. They're requesting a catering liquor license at 3253 Dodge Street, Suite 1103. They currently hold a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 38 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Fulcher, 3253 Dodge Street, on behalf of the Element Hotel, just look for[1483.76]
They Currently Hold A Class C Liquor License.
Public Hearing On Agenda Item Number 38 Begins Now. Are There Any Proponents?
Kyle Fulcher, 3253 Dodge Street. On Behalf Of The Element Hotel. Just Look For Your Approval On This Catering License.
Thank You. Are There Any Other Proponents? Are There Any Opponents? Public Hearing Is Closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted Seven To Zero. Item Number 39, Big Red Kino Is Granted Approval To Operate A Satellite Location At DJ's Dugout At 2102 South 67th Street.
Public Hearing On Agenda Item Number 39 Begins Now. Are There Any Proponents?
Yes. Mr. President, Members Of The Council. My Name Is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President Of Marketing For Big Red Kino. We're Located At 11248 John Galt Boulevard. I'm Here Representing DJ's Dugout. And I'd Be Happy To Answer Any Questions You Might Have.
Thank You. Are There Any Other Proponents? Are There Any Opponents? Public Hearing Is Closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted Seven To Zero.
Thank You.
Item Number 40, Resolution That A Hearing Shall Be Held On March 5, 2013 Or A Subsequent Date Requested By The Licensee And Agreed To By The City Attorney To Determine If The Class I Retail Liquor License Held By Club Equus At 5017 South 24th Street Should Be Cancelled Or Revoked.
Public Hearing On Agenda Item Number 40 Begins Now. Are There Any Proponents?
Yes. Lieutenant David Sedlicek With Omaha Police Department Southeast Precinct On The A Shift. Basically, I'm Just Going To Outline Briefly What We've Been Seeing At This Club And The Problems. Basically, In 2010, We Had Two Police Related Incidents And Two Tavern Reports. In 2011, We Had Seven Incidents At That Location And Four Tavern Reports. In 2011, Three Of Those Incidents Involved Gunfire. Two Of Them Were Shootings. And One Of Them Was The Business Was Shot With Gunfire. And Basically, I'll Bring Up The Reason We're Here Today Is Since November 17th, We've Had Four Incidents At This Club. I'll Mention The Two Biggest Incidents. One Was Saturday, December 29th, About 1:35 Hours In The Morning. Officers Received A Radio Call Of A Large Fight Going Inside And Outside Of Club X. Upon Arrival, Officers Observed Numerous Parties Fighting. They Did Make Three Arrests, One For Abducting, One For Misdemeanor Assault. They Also Noticed Numerous Gang Members Inside And Outside Of The Club. The Big Thing For Us On This Is At The Location Was One Lieutenant, Three Sergeants And Eighteen Officers. So We Had Quite A Few Resources Tied Up On This Incident. That Takes Us To January 1st, About 01:20 Hours. Officers Received A Radio Call His Location. Maze Was Spreading Inside Of The Club. Basically, It Was A Very Large Crowd. People Were Getting Trampled At The Doorway. Officers Arrived. They Start To Disperse The Crowd. One Officer Was Assaulted. He Was Punched In The Head. Another Officer Received A Fractured Finger When He Tried To Make The Arrest On The Party. That Party Turned Out To Be A Known Gang Member. We Did Have Three Arrests At That Time. On The Scene Was One Lieutenant, Three Sergeants And Over Twenty-Four Officers. Basically, Our Main Concern With This Club Is The Safety Of Those That Go To Events There, The Employees Themselves And Then The Police That Ultimately Respond. We Continue To See More Events There. I'm Going To Give You An Example Of One. It Was A I Love Strippers Party. This Was Planned For February 8th. I Don't Know If You Want To.
Is He Sure?
I'm Always Amazed At How They Keep Passing These Things Out.
The Thing About This Was, And Then It Was A Pole Dancing Event That Was Going To Take Place. This Ultimately Led To Sergeant Jason Christensen Of Our Bioshield Contacted Jay Davis From City Planning. At That Time, We Found Out That Club X Does Not Have A Dance Permit. So They Couldn't Even Allow Dancing At The Location. They Also Looked At The Occupancy Permit For The Location. And It Dated Back To 2004 That It Can Only Be A Restaurant. We Continue To See More Events There. They Have One Actually Planned For Friday, This Friday, March 1st. It Looks Like A Birthday Party. And I'm Not Sure. That's An ASL All Event. There Was One That Was Planned In Lincoln A While Back. And Lincoln Actually Cancelled The Event Because They Were Fear Of The Problems They Would Have There. Also Have, You Know, A Flyer On There. Any Questions For Me?
Thank You, Lieutenant. Are There Any Other Proponents? Are There Any Opponents?
Mr. President, Members Of The Council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Being Here With The Licensee And Mr. Luna. And We're Here For Any Questions. I'm Not Really Quibbling With Anything The Officers Said. We're Not Debating The Issue. There Was Two Main Problems. The Issue With This Club Is Really, There Was Two Big Problems. December 29th, 2013, Mr. Momgard Has Given You A Memo Of What Happened There. And The Officers Recited Some Of That. I Don't, We Really Don't Quibble On That. That's Why He, I'm Going To Propose To You That He Changes His, The Way He Operates This Place And We Go Back To Being Primarily A Restaurant. And Because Obviously, He Can't, Doesn't Want To Deal With That Type Of Issues Either. Secondly, As To This, Let Me Just Mention As To This Stripper Deal. That Was A Scheduled Event There. When He Was Contacted By Law Enforcement That There Could Be Issues With That, He Cancelled It, Which Cost Him Like $1,700. This, As I Understand It, Is Some Kind Of A, Something Like The Chippendales Except Female Version. And They're A Touring, They're A Touring Deal. He's Not A Strip Club By Nature. It Was Supposed To Be A One-Time Event. He Tells Me There's Nothing Scheduled For March 1st. He's Not Sure What Is Going On There. But Since He's Cancelled All Of His Outside Promotions. He Does Have A DJ, DJ There. We Did Go Back Also On The Occupancy Permit And Found Out There Was Some, There Was A Misfiling Or Something There. I'm Still Clearing That Up With Jay Davis. To My Knowledge, There Is An Occupancy Permit There. I Talked To Mr. Momgard. We've Kind Of, Kind Of Worked Out A Possible, If With The Council's Blessing, A Possible Solution Or Proposal. I Think Cancellation At This Point Is Too Severe For Him. Number One, He's Going To Change The Name, Which Will Reflect, Will Change The Name Effectively As Soon As We Can Get The Sign Up. I Told Him Not To Do That Till We've Been Here To The Council. Secondly, He's Going To Double, More Than Double The Size Of The Restaurant There. There's About 6,000 Square Feet There. Probably Right Now, Probably Only 1,000 To 1,500 Is Dedicated To Restaurant. We're Going To Make That More Than 3,000 Square Feet Dedicated To Restaurant. He's Also Going To Close Off The Nightclub Part So That The Restaurant Will Be Compatible With That. Most Of, A Lot Of What His Entertainment Is, Is Karaoke And That Type Of Thing, Which Is More Akin To Neighborhood Lounge Type Of Nighttime Activity As Opposed To Pure Nightclub. Again, Changing The Name Will Obviously Send A Signal That It's, Nightclub Is Not The Number-One Priority. Furthermore, There Will Be No More Outside Promotions Of Any Kind, Only Interior. They Still Could Have Birthday Parties. They Still Could Have A DJ Under This Proposal. But They Would Have None Of These Outside Promoters. And Of These Outside Promoters, And We've Talked To The Council, We've Talked About This Before, Which Is Becoming Increasingly A Problem In This City. And That We May Have To Look Sometime At Licensing Them Or Something Because They Seem To Cause A Lot Of Problems For A Lot Of My Clients. Who Get Into A Situation Where They Say, Hey, Okay. They Will Promote It Through Social Media And So On. And Then You're Thinking There's Going To Be Three Or 400 People Come And 800 Comes. And They're Not Prepared For It. Oftentimes Brings Bad Elements. That Is A Big Problem. Anyway, He's Going To End His Association With Those Type Of Folks And Have No More Events That's Not Done From Inside. And The Event Friday, He Doesn't Know Anything About. He's Here To Answer Any Questions You Might Have. So That's What Our Proposal Is. And We're Not, We're Trying To Work With The Officers. When They Called About This Deal, He Cancelled It The Same Day Immediately. And Again, Had A Considerable Cost To Himself. So With That, I Think Overall, His Record Down There Since He's Been There Has Been Decent. He's Had No Liquor Violations I'm Aware Of. And There Have Been Some Issues In The Neighborhood, But Not Really Associated With His Club, Except These Two That The Officer Talked About, Which Were Bad. Bad Deal Have To Be Straightened Out. Can't Be Tolerated. I'd Vote To Cancel It Too If Those Continued. But We'd Like To Give Him Another Chance. So The Suggestion Is That We Maybe Set A New Date. I'm Thinking Middle Of May, Middle To End Of May, Something Like That. And Then Have Him Back. And At That Point, Either He's Proved Up And He's Doing What He's Telling You He's Going To Do, Operating A Place That Everybody's, That's Consistent With The Public Interest. Or If Not, Then You'll Have To Take Whatever Actions Appropriate At That Time. And That's All I Have Unless You Have Questions. And Mr. Momgard Is Here To Answer Any Other Questions You Might Have.
Thank You, Mr. Kelly. Are There Any Other Opponents?
I'm Sorry. I Wanted To Jump Up When You Said Proponents And I Didn't Get Here Fast Enough.
So You Are A Proponent?
Correct.
Go Ahead.
Margie Magnuson, 4151 Davenport. I'm Here As A Spokesman For Local. And I Want To Thank The Council For Your Effort To Address Alcohol Sales Establishments That Through Their Business Practices Are Negatively Affecting Our City And Our Neighborhoods, Impacting Public Health, Safety And Quality Of Life. For To Those Who Are Living And Working Within Our Neighborhoods. We See That The Resolution Before You Would Be A Good Incident Where The New Alcohol Ordinance Passed In October Of 2012 Could Be Used To Address These Types Of Issues In The Future. The Ordinance Applies To Reasonable Operational Standards To All Liquor Selling Businesses Citywide In An Effort To Mitigate These Types Of Problems. Residents Are Working To Address These Alcohol Cell Establishments By Keeping Records And Logging Issues Such As These Disturbances Identified Here Today, As Well As Other Nuisances. And That Could Be Used As Evidence As We Move Forward To Implement The Alcohol Ordinance. Just Would Like You To Take That In Consideration As You Move Forward And Address These Kind Of Issues. Because This Is Exactly What We Were Thinking About When We, You Know, Came To You Guys With The, To Establish The Liquor Ordinance. So Please Keep That In Mind As You Address These Issues. Thank You.
Thank You. Public Hearing Is Closed. Lieutenant, If You Could Come Back Up To. Lieutenant, You Stated That On The January 1st Incident, There Was A One Lieutenant, Two Sergeants And Twenty-Four Officers That Responded?
Actually, Three Sergeants And Probably Over Twenty-Four Officers.
So Is That About The Entire Force Of The Southeast Precinct?
Actually, It Would Include Some. Like We Have Utility Officers That Kind Of Keep An Eye On Things. And Then Gang Unit Officers Also Responded. It Ended Up Being A Helping Officer Because They Were Just Overwhelmed With The Crowd And Persons Being Spreading With Maze. So.
But That's The Vast Majority Of The Police Officers That You Have Available, I'd Say At That Point In Time.
In The South Precinct, Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I Think That's Probably About As Most Concerning To Me Is Anything. Is That, You Know, We've Got One Location And We've Practically Got The Entire Omaha Police Department Down There To Respond. And You Know, That Is Not Acceptable. So.
Some Of That, That Was Caught On Camera Actually. By One Of The Cruiser Cameras Did Catch Video Of The Part Of That Incident.
All Right, Sir. Thank You. Mr. Gernat.
Thank You, Mr. President.
Mr. Luna?
Yes. Michael Luna?
Mr. Luna, You And Your Attorney, Mr. Kelly, We Had A Meeting In My Office Recently. Is That Correct?
Yes, That Is Correct.
Okay. And During That Meeting, I Think You Related To Me That You Had A Meeting With The Command At Southeast Precinct. Is That Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And In A Capsulated Version, What Did You Tell Them? And What Did You Tell Me?
That, You Know, That I Understood That The Outside Promotion, The Promoters Were Bringing, You Know, These Crowds That Were Just, You Know, Uncontrollable, Too Large To, Is Something That, You Know, We, It Was Something We Shouldn't Be Getting Into And Something That We Were Going To Definitely Move Away From.
Okay. And What Other Plans Did You Share With Me In Regards To The Concerns That Got You To This Point?
You Know, When I, When We First Opened, When I, The Business, It Was, It Did Well. And It Was More Of A South Omaha Crowd. And It Was More Of A Local, You Know, It Wasn't Branched Out To The Rest Of The City. And That Seemed To, You Know, Do Very Well. So And Also With, That I'm Starting With The Food, That's Also Doing Very Well. So The Plan Is, Well, What I'm Going To Do Is I Realized The Problems That I'm Having. And It's Just, Being Here At This Point, You Know, Even When I First Got My License, I Was Proud To Get My License. And It Was Something I Was Really Proud Of. And Now, You Know, I Truly Am Embarrassed, You Know, To Be Here. And You Know, It's Almost Like How Thick-Headed Could This Person Be? That, You Know, They're Not Learning From These Problems. And You Know, It's Definitely Something That, You Know, Is Obviously Not Working, You Know. Unfortunately, The Food There And The Establishment Is Very Good. And It Does Have A Following. So Why Not Make That The Main, You Know, Income Source? You Know, This Club, You Know, Business Just Isn't Working, You Know. It's Too Difficult To Bring The People In. When You Can't Bring The People In, You Try To Get Other Promoters To Do It. And It Just Brings You Problems. And It's Just, It's A Bad Business Sense And Practice. So You Know, Even Before, You Know, These Issues, It Was Just A Downhill Battle That I Was Planning On, You Know, Expanding The Restaurant. And The Location Itself Is 6,000 Square Feet. I Recently, I Put Up, I Cut Off 2,000 Square Foot Of That. And I Put It Just For Food Itself. And What I'm Going To Do Now Is I'm Going To Bring More. I'm Going To Open Up And Make 4,000 Square Foot For Food. And There's Going To Be, You Know, A Smaller Area For Maybe, You Know, The, What I Did Initially Was, You Know, The Local Dances And, You Know, Cater To, You Know, The Local Community. And You Know, Something At A Much Smaller Scale So It Could Be, You Know, Controlled. And You Know, It's Definitely Something, It's A Learning Experience That, You Know, It Just Shouldn't Have Happened. You Know, These Incidents, You Know, With The Police Officers And Everything, You Know, I've Tried To Work, You Know, As Well As I Could, You Know, Do Everything, You Know, They Asked Me To Do. And You Know, The Last Thing I Want Is Any Of Them To Get Injured Or Hurt Or, You Know, It's Something That Truly Does Concern Me, You Know. I'm Just Not Saying That, You Know, I Do, I Don't Want To Be, You Know, That Bar, The Problem Bar. I Truly Don't, You Know. And If, Whatever Needs To Be Done, You Know, I'm Willing To Do. You Know, This, I Have Everything Invested In This. It's My Livelihood. So It's Not, You Know, Whatever I Need To Change, I Will Change, You Know.
What? A Couple Of Things Concern Me. One Is The, After Our Meeting In My Office, We Found Out That There Was An Event Scheduled For That Following Weekend. Did You Cancel That? Or Did That Proceed To Be Held?
It Was Cancelled.
It Was Cancelled?
Yes.
Okay. And Your Attorney Is Saying That One Of The Shows That Is Being Promoted On March The 1st, Let's See, I'm A Grown Jazz Man Or Something To That Effect, On March The 1st Is.
I'm Truly Not Aware Of That. I've Had Multiple Times Where Promoters Will, You Know, Will Promote. Or Even If That's Something That Was Cancelled And, You Know, Maybe They're Still For Some Reason Promoting It. Because What I, Before The Initial Hearing, I Had Events Scheduled For Three Months In Advance, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And Those Were All Cancelled. That One, It's Something That I'm Not Aware Of. And It's Something That It's Not Going To Happen.
Well, That's Possible Because It Says Here At Club X At 507 South 24th Street. I Think Those People Are Being In For Quite A Surprise.
Yeah, Yeah, No, Definitely.
On March The 1st If They Show At That Address Whoever Owns That Property.
And It's Happened Before To Where, You Know, Someone Will Inform Me, Hey, You Know, Why Is This Being Scheduled? And I'll Have Something Completely Different Scheduled That Day. And I'll Have To, You Know, Look For And Contact Those People. And It Goes Back To The Problem Of Dealing With Promoters That, You Know, We Shouldn't Be Dealing With. You Know, It's, It's, It's Obvious. You Know, When You Have, When You Have These Promoters Just Trying To Get Everybody In The Door, Anybody They Can Bring In. They Don't Care Who It Is. It Could Be.
But You Have Control Over That, Sir.
Right.
Yes.
You Have Control. You're The Ultimate Say.
Of Course.
Correct?
Correct. You Know, So.
It's Cancelled, Right?
Yes. The Solution Is Stopped 100%.
And I Remember A Liquor Establishment Down On 13th Street That Had A Problem. And There Was A Name Change There. They Brought Place Into Compliance. I Think There Was A CO Question There. They Brought That Into Compliance. Seems To Be, I Had A Problem With That. But I Think It Went Through. And I Haven't Heard A Complaint Out Of That Place Since. But I, I'm Really Concerned With This When The Police Department Prepares A Timeline For Us. Okay? And That's What We Have In Front Of Us Today Is A Timeline. Granted, I Have Seen Worse. Okay? But These Too Large With The Amount Of Resources That Were Called Upon Both On December 29th, 2012 And January 1st, 2013 Certainly Concerned Me. And Both The City Legal Department And The Police Department Also Note In This Report That Throughout 2012, There Were X Number Of Assaults, Disturbances, Fights And Shots Fired. But There's A Caveat Here Not All Involving The Business Or Known Customers. So They're Not Saying That Everything Generated At Or From Club X. Okay? But They're Making Us Aware That There Is A Problem. And That It Bears Addressing. I'm Not At A Point, I Know, Mr. Kelly, You've Said That You'd Like To Have A Two-Month Layover To Allow This To, This Three-Segment Approach That He Currently Has Or That He's Changed Where He's Blocked Off The Area That Has Been Of Grave Concern To Not Only The People Of South Omaha But Our Law Enforcement Folks. And Expanding The Restaurant And Having A Lounge Area That May Have A DJ Or Family Birthday Party, Something Of That Sort. That, As You Say, Is Controllable. And You Have The Ultimate Say.
Of Course.
Correct?
Correct, Yes.
I Guess, Mr. Councilman, I Guess We Were Thinking Two Months Because You've Got To Change The Name And The Sign. It All Takes Some Marketing. And It Takes Two To Three Weeks Just To Get The Sign Physically In There. So I Thought At Least Then A Month After That To Be Able To Prove To Law Enforcement And Youselves That He Truly Do Have A New Business Model Operating Up And That's Going, That's Sustainable.
Well, I Certainly Have To Ask My Colleagues, You Know, Vote Your Conscience. I Do Remind You Again That We Did Have A Similar Incident Down In My District, Down On South 13th Street. They Brought That In Compliance. They Have A Name Change At That Facility. And There's Been No Problem Since. I Don't Think We're In Here To Put People Out Of Business. Because I Think If You're Going To Do It, You're Going To Do It On Your Own, You Know? And The System Is Just Going To Follow And Say, Okay. That's It. No More. Okay? But If You're Telling One Government Body One Thing And The Enforcement Side Of Government Another Thing, That Is Troubling. That Is Very Troubling. And Then At The Same Time Having A Sizable Amount Of Law Enforcement Resources Consumed At One Location And Wound Up With Two Officers Being Injured? That Is Troubling. I'm Not Sure. I Don't Want To Put Anybody Out Of Business. But I Know That We've Had, Mr. Kelly Was At Pre-Council This Morning. Made That Appeal. I Would Digress To Any Of My Colleagues At This Time, Mr. President. I would digress to any of my colleagues at this time, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Mr. Grenant, what's your...
I don't wanna put the young man out of business, I'd like to give him that one chance to... This is just, I digress. Thank you, Mr. President. You're given. Mr. Gray.
Mr. Luna, here's my concern. And in order for me to support giving you a chance at this, you're gonna have to be on a really short leash, quite frankly. But my concern has to, is, you know, there were a number of instances here in 2012 culminating in the two in December and January, but according to this report, there were a number of instances in 2012. I guess, what took you so long to make the change? What took you so long to come to the conclusion that you needed to make a change? I mean, this goes back the whole year, so I guess I don't know what brought you to this point.
I guess, if I can jump in, Mike Kelly, for the record, I think part of the bad problems, just by far, were the two incidents. The other incidents, there were a couple disturbances and some fights, but I hate to say it, that that happened to the bar business.
It does.
Totally unusual. That wouldn't change you to do the drastic steps he's doing now to change his complete business model. So, I think the answer to your question is just, nothing had happened that was guy's attention this bad. The two incidents right together were just a perfect storm, and that, of course, overwhelmed him, and that's why he's making the changes he's making.
Okay, here's my other concern. The other concern is, you know, once you establish this label, because promoters are going to, and others are going to characterize this as a bar to go fight. And by extending the restaurant, but still having, I guess, some sort of a place where they can dance and so forth, I mean, tell me how you're going to control people, the kinds of people that may come to that club, even though you've reduced the size of the dancer. And as I understand, did someone said you didn't have a dance permit? Is that accurate?
That's correct, it's applied for.
Okay, so you're applying for a dance, so you don't even, you don't have that yet. So, I guess, you know, first of all, I'm not gonna wanna see anything in the way of dancing until you've got the permit. But secondly, give me some idea as to how or what you're going to do to continue to make sure that the people that come to your establishment are not people that are looking for trouble.
Of course.
What are you gonna put in place, is what I'm asking for? Are you gonna put extra security? What are you gonna do with that?
Yeah, well, we currently have a good relationship with Omaha Police Department, where we, you know, we sit down in advance with them, you know, and I'll have, like, I'll give them a call, the one that our officer does the scheduling, and we'll talk about the events that are coming up, and, you know, we'll discuss, you know, it's this group, let's say, a group from Mexico that's somewhat famous, you know, we'll discuss on, you know, how many people might show up, and how many officers we might need, you know, two, three, four, you know, just depending on that situation. And then inside, I have, you know, depending on what the event is going on, anywhere between four to eight security guards. So, like I said, when I cut back, it is gonna be a much, you know, smaller space. And it's something that, you know, if I could just get rid of, you know, the whole dancing 100%, I would, you know. At this point in time, if I did, I wouldn't be able to even pay the rent to there, you know? And it's something that, I like, I battle it, you know? Like, when we're, when we're having an event, I'm looking at it like, you know, I don't wanna do this if I don't have to, but then at the same time, you know, the restaurant isn't quite there yet, you know? It's getting there, and right now, the winter is also something that's affecting me, you know? My food sales went down significantly because of the winter, and it's something that I'm definitely looking forward to when the summer comes, and especially adapting everything inside is gonna make, you know, I believe, a significant difference. And then I also have family members in Mexico that own and operate restaurants, and I asked for help, and actually, one of my aunts is coming up, who has been in the business for 10 years, and she's gonna, you know, help me, you know, turn the place around, and, you know, so it's definitely, I guess the answer to your question is, if I have any event, well, the biggest problems I've had are with the promoter crowd, and it's basically, you know, a crowd that I'm not gonna be having anymore, it'll be completely opposite, you know? The crowds that I'm gonna be bringing now are gonna be, you know, local to South Omaha.
Let me be a little bit more direct. What are you gonna do, what are you gonna do if you start getting an overflow crowd?
Well, we have to respect, you know, the, you know, our occupancy of location, you know? And it's one thing that I've been working with OPD here recently, is even when they recognize individuals that, you know, probably shouldn't be in there, you know, they've been stopping them, and, you know, I definitely need to, and it's something that we have done, except for, you know, these two locations, these two instances where, you know, we keep track of how many people should be allowed in there, you know? How much space do we have? How many people do you allow in? You don't allow, you know, more than you should.
But let me also say, Mr. Gray, when he goes to the restaurant, right now, I think it's certified for 470 people.
Okay.
I would expect that'll get cut in half, probably, when we reconfigure it with seating, because right now, it's all open. When that's refigured with seating, I'm sure they'll cut it in half. That goes, that solves, if you don't have an outside promoter, that's, basically, you don't have the security problems anymore. Now, again, it's a good question, what's he, what he would do with them, but the problems 98% of the time go away. Once you, once you've redone the business model, and you have a different, you're just reducing the size of the place stops a lot of it, and then the type of people coming there before won't come.
I, I'm gonna relinquish the floor for right now, just for some of my other colleagues, but I have to think about this for a minute, especially with my colleagues on the liquor committee, because I think they need to appear before us at least within the next three months, after they've got their sign up and everything, and then maybe another six months to make sure that things are going to work okay. And if not, then I think when Ms. Magnuson talked about the implementation, perhaps maybe of our occupancy permit issue may come to play here, but I think they need to be on a really short leash. I don't know what that looks like yet, but I'll, let me, let me think about that for a minute and relinquish the floor for right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Luna, I hear you say that you're gonna have the situation under control, but what concerns me is that it has been under your control, and it's basically been out of control. And I'm also, excuse me, but I'm having a little difficulty accepting the fact that we've got promoters that are scheduling events at your establishment, and you don't know anything about it. I just, I find it hard to believe that somebody would just arbitrarily schedule an event at your place, and you wouldn't know anything about it, so I, I think it's time to have a, personally, I think it's time to have a formal hearing here, and we need to let the council decide what our next actions should be. Mr. Grenant.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Luna, you were talking about the future, and I heard you say promoters twice. After you had been asked, and one of your, portion of your game plan was to eliminate that portion, but you kept referring to it, that concerns me. I understand events, I understand maybe having DJs maybe once or twice a month or something along that, I understand birthday parties, I understand the small-type family events, fully understand all of that. But you, you're, I don't know if you just loosely use that term of promoters after you first took it out of your game plan, that that's what you were going to do to assure the council that taking that promoter aspect out, but yet you continue to use that word, that bothers me. Can you explain that? Was that just a misstep, or what?
To be honest with you, I wasn't aware when I mentioned that. I don't know if that was when I mentioned maybe having a group from Mexico or something. I wasn't aware.
Can I ask a question from Mr. Luna? Are you assuring this council you're not gonna use any outside promotions, as I said to the council earlier? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I stuck my neck out on 13th Street. Oh, Lieutenant, could I ask you, the, I'm sure you're familiar with the place down on 13th and Center that I had alluded to earlier, that went through a name change and...
Yes, I think I know what you're talking about, yes.
Okay. Lieutenant, just for the record, if you'd restate your name.
Lieutenant David Sedgwick.
Have you had any problems that the Southeast Police Precinct had to respond after they put their new method of operation into effect?
Actually, we did have one incident where they used a promoter, and they didn't have a large crowd that, we didn't have any problems, but we did have a police response just to clear the crowd out before things happened.
Did that happen, that hasn't generated a timeline for resources used by Southeast as of yet, right?
No, because after they had that, we talked to them, and they haven't done it since.
Okay. So, a good knock and talk works from time to time?
Sometimes.
Sometimes it works, okay.
That's my fear right now with Mr. Luna. We met with him, he told us we're gonna stop doing these events, and then we're seeing them pop up, and we're just not sure where they're coming from. I mean, he's kinda told us he's out of town a lot, he has a couple managers, and I don't know if these managers are arranging events or not, and that's just kinda my two cents worth, but...
All right. Thanks, Lieutenant. Do you, do you have onsite managers there when your doors are actually open for business?
Yes, there's...
And are they, do they have the same authority as you do, being the owner?
No, no, I have 100% authority, and...
Okay. And how often are you there when your doors, when your doors are open for business?
Here, to be honest with you, here recently, I haven't been there as much as I have been in the past, and only due to the fact that I also have another construction company that I was focusing on, but now that this situation has been going on, you know, and it was only just for, you know, the economic reasons, just to help boost the business. But it's something that, going forward, it's, you know, this, the restaurant is gonna be, you know, my, it's gonna have 100% of my attention, you know?
Will you be there to supervise?
I will be there to supervise, it'll be my responsibility. It's, it's not gonna be, you know, a nightclub, it's gonna be a restaurant.
Do you understand the concerns of law enforcement?
Of course.
That have been displayed here today?
Of course, no, 100%.
Understand the concerns of what my colleagues have asked in the form of questions of you and your attorney. Are you, are you fully cognizant of that? Do you understand what they're asking? Do you see that, that guide point that we're trying to get?
I do, I truly do. And that's something else that I'm embarrassed with, you know, with them, is, you know, sitting down and speaking to them and having a good game plan, and now with these, you know, different events coming up, it's like, almost like a slap in the face or something like that. It's something that, you know, I apologize for that, and I, to be honest, I wasn't, you know, aware of, those events are not...
Are your other managers making those decisions?
No, no, because...
That has to be cleared through.
It has to be cleared through. Maybe we can't have an event unless I approve it, it will not happen. Like, if anybody would've showed up that day, I would've been like, no way you're coming in.
Well, I, you know, it may be a misprint, but they say your club...
Of course.
It's an address that's down in my colleague, Mr. Jerome's district.
Of course, of course.
So, that might, that might be a concern for that property owner, but, until they get the proper directions, but if you know nothing about it, I, you've satisfied my concern that if some of your management makes a plan, they still have to clear it through you on promoter.
Of course, of course.
Okay. But with that part dropped from your game plan, and focusing on a restaurant lounge type, okay, you don't foresee that problem generating anymore? You don't see it coming to fruition anymore?
I truly don't.
All right, I'm gonna, I stuck my neck out on 13th Street. I'm gonna do it again. Short leash, Mr. Luna, okay? Short leash. I make a motion for a two-month layover.
Well, here's what we can do. Best thing, best thing for us to do would be to make a motion to amend this resolution so that, to set the hearing for April 23rd.
Oh, because this was a date setting.
This was a date setting only, so let's set it for April 23rd, which is two months.
And that, and that date again was?
April 23rd. We have all of March, almost all of April.
Well, I'll second that, but I would want some other, some additional conditions, so...
Thank you, Mr. President. Lieutenant, if you could return to the podium.
Yes.
Please restate your name.
Lieutenant David Sedgwick.
Lieutenant, Mr. Luna has categorized, or characterized, his relationship with the Omaha Police Department is a good working relationship. Would you agree with that statement?
We've had good meetings with him, yes. I saw Captain Catherine Bocaster, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, you, you feel comfortable here today, I mean, with what we've heard, or...
Right, Counselman Grenant, I'm not out to put someone out of business, but I'm just, again, concerned for the public safety of people that attend his establishment and even innocent people going by, so...
I share your concerns. Okay, fine, thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mombard, is Mr. Mombard here? Okay. I would be supportive of a two-month layover, but there's some other conditions that I would wanna see, and I wanna make sure we're on legal footing before I do that, but I think we need to, I think that leash needs to be short. I think there needs to be some trigger there, where if, for example, if there is another promoter, that that automatically triggers our occupancy ordinance, that if there's another, if it's found to be another, if there's another promoter-driven activity that causes problems at that club, that that automatically triggers a occupancy permit to revoke the occupancy permit for a period of time. I just wanted your response to that.
Well, if you, if you set a new date for the hearing, so they give them more time, that does not in any way stop you from using the occupancy ordinance to attack any problems that come in the meantime. You don't have to do anything with that today, that's just sitting there. And so, what would, you know, I guess I'm bothered by the word of automatic, we haven't started the process for that, to use that ordinance, so I wouldn't wanna put it as an automatic, but certainly, you, you're free to take the position that you will give them a hearing date in April for the cancellation, but that if there's any events that happen between now and then that cause a problem, that you will immediately commence the process to use that ordinance that you have separate from this.
Okay.
Nothing you do today will stop you from using that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mombard. That'll be, I would like to include that in terms of your, your motion to layover till April, I would like to include that in that motion, if you would accept that.
Available to us.
Okay, okay. Mr. Luna, you need to understand that we are, what we're doing here is postponing the hearing date, but if something happens in that time, I'm going to suggest that we, that it trigger revoking your occupancy permit.
I understand.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just, I have one question for the lieutenant, I think, if he's available. So, what we're doing today is, what's on the floor at least, is just a delay on the hearing, it wouldn't decide the matter one way or the other, and I appreciate your comment about, you know, it's not your job to put somebody out of business, and that's not our line of thinking either, but what concerns me the most is the police response on a couple of these incidents, and that was clearly your testimony, and how much resources that occupied for you and for your people. So, I guess my question to you is, not to put you on the spot, but if you had an opinion about the proposition, proposition on the floor right now, as to whether you prefer we establish a date today, or allow, you know, another month and a half to see how it goes?
I mean, I'm fine with a month and a half to see how it goes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion. This is an amendment to amend the resolution to set the date for April 23rd.
Roll call.
On the amendment. Grenant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes, on behalf of the Councilman, I have a question.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
And Mr. Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. Now, as amended?
As amended.
Roll call.
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
And Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. The resolution is adopted as amended 5-0, or 5-1-1.
Mr. President, just a moment of privilege now that that issue's over.
Yes, Mr. Jerem.
There's been discussion by the Law Committee, so those out watching or here today, about this process of licensing promoters. And we've tasked Mr. Mungard on behalf of the Law Committee to try to develop a workable framework for licensing promoters, because the committee has noted on the cases that come before us, they have this recurring pattern, and that is that they tend to, for lack of a better phrase, businesses that aren't making it on their own model are turning to these promoters that they then count on to develop a concept to basically bring a lot of people into the bar to generate business, and they have no control over them, they don't know what they're doing, and then all the problems show up. So, I think we gave Mr. Mungard a month or two to work something up in that regard. And so, we look forward to him coming back. We have issues to work out in terms of places like, you know, CenturyLink Center and Mecca and those kinds of promoters versus these kind of promoters that you hear about in the smaller establishments and there being a big difference between the professionalism and the type of operational standards that they have. So, we are working on that to hopefully give us another tool in toolbox, so...
Mr. Clerk.
Resolution number 41 is a resolution, the hearing shall be held on March 5th to determine if the Class C liquor, retail liquor license held by Doc's Bar and Grill at 4303 South 89th Street should be canceled or revoked. We have communication from the owner. They have closed that location as of the first of this year. And we've forwarded that to the State Patrols and they're going to show him what he needs to do to cancel his license. So, we should place this on file.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Oh, Thompson's out of the chambers.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 6-0. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 42 through 43 were held on February the 12th, 2013. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all both passed 6 to 0.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 44 through 66 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, or if you are a proponent or opponent.
Good afternoon, council members. Urban McSwain Jr., 6531 Newport Avenue. I serve on a committee to commemoratively name Maple Street, Miami Street, from 22nd to 24th. The proposed name change is J.L. Shannon. J.L. Shannon pastors a church in North Omaha in the council member Gray's district. There is a meeting coming up in April to inaugurate him as a bishop over the second half of Nebraska. We have one jurisdiction and that's headed by Bishop John O. Ford. This will be headed up by Joseph L. Shannon. So, part of that inauguration, we hope to have a name change for that street. He's done much for this city, as many of you may know, in terms of providing home for low and moderate income families. Commemoratively, he's just fantastic, reaching across the aisle to help individuals get themselves together spiritually, financially, economically, and I think he deserves that commemorative name change. Appeal to your notion to vote unanimously for this name change. Any questions, I'll be pleased to answer.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, someone from Planning?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department.
Rick, I think during your first year, you encountered some resistance from the council headed by me that the person has to be not living if we name a street after them. Where did that all flush out? Where are we at on all that?
You are correct about that provision, but that provision was related to the renaming of a street, not a commemorative naming, and this is a commemorative naming.
Okay.
Process. So, we did not stipulate that in the commemorative process that the individual had to be, could not be living.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I wanted to echo the comments of Pastor McSwain. I was at Pastor Shannon's church this past weekend and he truly is, we were there for the groundbreaking as well as the ribbon cutting for Shannon Heights, and he has done much in this community and very much deserves the commemorative name change. And when it came, each of those come before the council member whose district it's in, and I vigorously signed it because it, he's well deserving of that. And thank you all for bringing it forward and I intend to support it and intend to be there for when the inauguration takes place and the, I guess it's the, is it the national or international bishop comes to town?
National.
National bishop when he comes to town. I plan to be there. Thank you.
I have a question for Public Works.
Marty Gray, Public Works.
Marty, with regard to agenda item number 46, I've just, this is the Omaha Concrete Repair Package Number Four in the amount of $1.1 billion. So, this is the last phase then of the concrete repair program, is that correct?
Yes, the last of the packages we had for this year.
And that will start later on this year during the normal construction season, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And I just want to state that, you know, the, so this is a total of probably close to $5 billion?
Correct.
Isn't that correct? And the City of Omaha has really been able to make some very significant repairs to our streets. This is not street resurfacing, but this is where we're actually replacing concrete panels. And so, this has been a very significant improvement for the City of Omaha and it's, I think the Public Works Department is to be commended for this, so... Thank you. Roll call.
This is on items 44 through 66. Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted 7 to 0. We'll now bring up item number 90 from the supplement. It's a resolution. City Council of City Omaha supports the repeal of the Nebraska Good Time Early Release Law for the violent and gun offenders and urges the Nebraska Legislature to amend LB 379 to require all violent offenders, gun offenders, and repeat violent offenders to serve at least 70% of their full sentence before consideration of Good Time Early Release. And we have a letter of support.
Public hearing on agenda item number 90 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Members of the council, good afternoon. John Wells, President, Omaha Police Officers Association, 13445 Cryer Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to ask for your support in adopting this resolution to encourage the legislature to modify the legislative bill to include the 70% provision. This has really been an issue near and dear to us for quite some time, and we've done a lot of research on the issue and we've looked at states surrounding Nebraska, and it's really become an issue, especially as the violence that plagues this community continues to increase and be pretty much on the forefront and be one of the biggest problems facing this community. Time and time again, we're finding that some of these high-profile incidents are being committed by people that you would otherwise think should be incarcerated for serious violent felonies, that due to the good time are released early because of the reduction in sentence. You look around, states around Nebraska, they all have something very similar, that there's basically a truth in sentencing, that you have to serve some portion of a mandatory minimum type of sentence, and Nebraska doesn't have that. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I encourage you to support this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat? Mr. Wells? So, we have a full picture of this. Isn't there? Just recently, there was a minister in the state of Iowa that was convicted for child molestation.
Yes.
And let's say a 30 years, something like that. Would have to serve 70% of that before even being eligible for good time. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. And that happened in Nebraska and got 30 years. Once sentenced, that would all, say to 30 years, that would automatically be cut in half based upon what we have in place right now. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay. And then good time would start right away as once that person would walk through the door of the penitentiary?
And it's even before. I think that's, calling it good time is a little bit of a misnomer because it's automatically calculated and added before they even walk through the front door of the penitentiary. It's not based on behavior, it's just an automatic reduction in sentence.
So, what we've actually produced is a revolving door that's certainly not benefiting law enforcement, certainly not benefiting the citizens of Omaha.
That is correct.
Because we're dealing with basically the same people over and over again. And I'm sure we probably have incidents here in Omaha, but that's the one that kind of sticks out in my mind and I wanted to use that as an example. So, I'd ask my colleagues to support this so we can continue that dialogue, the package that we have down in Lincoln, and hopefully we can make a change that would benefit not only Omaha, but hopefully the entire state as we proceed. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Stothard?
Yeah, John, just a question.
Yes.
I have to say your name again.
John Wells.
Thanks.
Omaha Police Officers Association, 13445.
Just your opinion, why not just do away with good time laws altogether?
Well, because I think you're talking about dramatically increasing prisons and prison sentences across the board, that there is a realistic budget process involved in all of this, and certainly that's up for discussion, but when you're talking about good time for nonviolent offenders, there's probably some room in the penitentiary for that, that I think really when we talk about the people that need to be behind bars and the people that are causing the crisis in our community, you're talking about the violent offenders, the violent person-on-person crimes, that I think we need to at least start there. Our position is get rid of good time period, you're absolutely right, as an association. But obviously, it's not just us. We're dealing with the legislature and trying to find some sort of middle ground, at least to start moving forward to address the issue.
Do most states have a good time law that you're aware of?
It's variable. A lot of the places, you have to earn it. Very few places do you see like Nebraska where it's automatic and it's, I wouldn't even call it good time. It's basically sentence reduction and that's why we're really pushing a truth in sentencing.
Does it have anything to do with prison overcrowding, though?
It has everything to do with that, in my opinion, the same with the furloughs, but at some point, and this is what we've talked to people in the legislature about, there needs to be a policy discussion, because the people of Omaha demand that we do something about this violent crime. And if we need to have a serious discussion on how best to allocate our limited resources, then we need to have that. We can't just simply roll back how we operate our corrections and let these people back out on the street, because quite frankly, time and time again, we're finding an instance where, whether it be a shooting with an Omaha police officer or a suspect in a very violent crime, is finding that it's somebody that should be otherwise incarcerated.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't have any, I don't have any questions for Mr. Wells, because I'm supportive of this ordinance, but I'm supportive of this resolution. But as I said in the council briefing, you know, this is a kind of a double-edged sword here. We run the risk of unless we're going to do something on the other end, we're going to run into some serious overcrowding problems. Currently, as we sit, we're about at 143% of capacity. So, we have more people incarcerated now than we have space for, actually. And if we continue, if we, when we pass this, if we're not going to do something at the other end to address, I think our county attorney put it best, we've got a number of people in, the majority of people we have in jail are people that we're mad at, not that we're afraid of, and we need to put away more people that we're afraid of and do some other things to address behavioral disorders and other things that people who are nonviolent offenders, who make up the vast majority of the population incarcerated right now, we've got to do some things to address those specific issues, drug abuse, substance abuse, alcohol abuse, those sorts of things. And we're putting too many people, we're locking too many people up rather than addressing the real problems that they have. This, doing this, I think is appropriate and necessary, but I want us to keep in mind that we run the risk also of the unintended consequence of perhaps maybe building another incarceration facility that I would really not want to see as one council member. But I think we've got to remind ourselves that if we're going to do something on the one end, if we don't address the other side of that, we could run into some serious problems later on that this state and this city both will have to deal with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Jerem.
I support this resolution because I support the legislation and the points that Mr. Wells makes are well-taken. You know, in the federal court system, a sentence of five years means five years and it means what it says. But there's a big difference between the way the federal government operates its budget and pays its bills, where they don't really do anything, they just run up a higher deficit and don't pay bills, and between Nebraska, where we have a constitutional amendment that we have to pay for our programs and balance the budget every year and not have deficits. And so, there's this tremendous outcry that people have, that they want to lower taxes, lower taxes, lower taxes, but when you have a cost of incarceration of over $40,000 per inmate per year, then you can see, the longer you keep them in, there's this higher cost that we have to pay for. And that, we as taxpayers have to support the appropriation process and the revenue process to fund that sort of penal system. Because, you know, for example, if we had a system where a sentence of a year meant a year, or five, five, or 10, 10, without parole or early release, do you really know and are you really prepared to pay the taxes that it would take to maintain that system, to build those prisons, to pay for the people, whether private contractors or public employees and their associated healthcare and pensions and everything else that comes along with it? Or aren't you? Because that's a part of what this resolution means. It means that you are voting for the revenue that will be needed to fund this as well as the appropriations. So, you know, when the legislature, or some people in the legislature push back and say, or possibly say, well, how much are you willing to pay for, we have to say, we're committed to that. And by my vote here today, and my pushing, as they do in Lincoln, my light on green or voting yes, I am tacitly saying to everyone, "I am committed to this form of public safety, because I'm willing to increase the length of sentences for violent offenders and repeat offenders and gun offenders, and I'm willing to pay for it. I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is and where my vote is." But who else is? You know, we have programs. When we have an analogous situation, a contract that we approve, maybe a collective bargaining agreement, that we know will require millions of dollars in funding to pay for, by voting for those sorts of things, are we willing to say that I'm willing to support the revenue necessary to pay for those liabilities, those contracts? And when you vote yes, you say that you are. You're willing to put your support behind it to the point where you're willing to tell your constituents, "I support this, I support the revenue necessary to support it." Because oftentimes, what you hear now is the Washington model, the Washington way they do things. Everybody wants something, but nobody's willing to pay for it, so they just run up deficits. We can't do it here. We balance our budget. And Mr. Wells so eloquently said, "Of course you want the absolute truth in sentencing." This legislation represents, in light of the budgetary constraints, the pressures on all the other forms of services the government provides at the state level, it, this is a good step. And it improves the sentencing, makes it more appropriate for these sorts of crimes, and in a cost-effective way, without overburdening the tolerance level, or the perceived tolerance level, of what people are willing to actually pay for in taxes to fund it. If we can't agree that keeping repeat violent offenders, rapists, child molesters, murderers, repeat gun violators in prison longer, in terms of matching what their actual sentence says, and paying for that, then I think that that would be a sad commentary. And so I'm confident in the Department of Corrections and being able to look at the prison population and manage it effectively, including look at whether there could be more people repositioned in terms of opening up the empty section of the Omaha Correctional Center here, in terms of housing people appropriate for that center there, as well as confident in our elected officials in Lincoln to make the budgetary adjustments that they need to support this. But I think that's an important part of the conversation, that, as much like Mr. Wells, such important words he said in such a short sentence, because that is vital to our support of this. Saying, "Okay, when the going gets tough budgetarily, people say, 'Well, why are my taxes the way they are?'" This is at least something you all feel confident in saying, "This is worth doing."
Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree this is an important issue, and I think it'll pass here unanimously today, and it should. My question to Mr. Weaver is, I believe this actual legislation's in the Judiciary Committee for public hearing tomorrow in Lincoln, is that correct?
Warren Weaver, City Council staff, yes, tomorrow, 1:30 is the public discussion about the issue.
And when this passes today, have we identified who's representing the city of Omaha in, at that public hearing for?
That's correct.
As a proponent?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you know who will represent the city in that discussion?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chala is going to be there, and he has asked for, I don't know if the chief is going to be there, maybe Mr. Wells knows, but I know that there has been a number of communications lining up. Law Department will be there. We have several letters that I'm aware of, at least three. We have a pretty good contingent tomorrow.
Great. I think it does rise to the occasion of him, but having a senior-level person like the chief, or someone like that, involved in the discussion, and Mr. Wells, do you know, do you intend to testify as well? Great. I know you do a nice job with it, as you did today, and we wish you luck.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, because I believe that so-called "good time" should be changed to "should time," I'm going to go ahead and vote for this. I also believe that we have a number of people that are in prison too long, and they're staying in contact with hardened criminals and becoming worse than they would than if they were somewhere else, perhaps here in Omaha on the empty wing, or something like that. So I hope the larger discussion also looks at those who aren't violent and those who can be rehabilitated, to look at not crowding our facilities with those people. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to approve? Second. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda items number sixty-seven through sixty-eight shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing agenda item number sixty-nine shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item number seventy, ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement between the City and 1501 Jackson LLC, to amend the division date, the amount of the TIF, and to change the project completion date.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This is an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the 1501 Jackson TIF Agreement, which was approved last year. There were some delays in financing. This project will move forward and with construction this spring. If you may recall, it's a hundred, or excuse me, seventy-nine market rate apartment units in a five-story, new construction, five-story apartment building that would include about one hundred and two spaces, garage spaces, as well as a ground floor office retail. The reason for the amendment is to increase the amount of the TIF by a little over $91,000 due to project costs, as well as to change the division date, as well as the completion date. And here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Agenda item number forty, or seventy-one, ordinance to amend, to approve Amendment Number Two to the Interlocal Agreement between the City, Council Bluffs, Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District for the Operation Maintenance of the Missouri River Trail Crossing Bridge.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-one begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number seventy-two, ordinance to approve the purchase and sale agreement with the Capital District LLC, a signee of Shamrock Development Incorporated for the city-owned property between Tenth and Twelfth Street, Capitol Avenue, and Interstate 480.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-two begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is all part of the RFP that was accepted by the city for the redevelopment of the Capital District area that was also approved by MECA. We've been working on this for quite some time, since that time with the Law Department to get an agreement that works for the city and as well as MECA. So what you'll see after this, after it's signed, is there'll be a lot of due diligence, there'll be the redevelopment plan that'll come before you, there'll be the redevelopment agreement that'll be coming before you. So you'll see a lot more of what is actually going to be done on this particular site down the road, but this is just the initial step to get that going. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Appeal or a bid rejection resolution. Item seventy-three is Nelson Hill Contracting appeals the rejection of their bid, January thirtieth, on the Elmwood Golf Course restroom remodel project.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-three begins now. Are there any proponents?
I am probably an opponent. I am Ben Lasik.
Sir, I'll call for the opponents in just a moment.
Okay.
Are there any other, there are no proponents. Are there any opponents?
Ben Lasik, representing Rife Construction. Nelson Hill bid this project, and they didn't have the proper certification for their tier contractors, and we did. It's a, it's a process you go through on the bid day. You look up the site with the certified contractors, and Treaty Electric was not on that site at that day. So by your own bid docs, you know, he's, they, Nelson Hill should be rejected.
That's it. Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The appeal is denied on a seven-zero vote. Item number seventy-four, resolution that the bid of Rife Construction to furnish all labor materials and equipment necessary to complete the renovation of the restrooms at Elmwood Park Golf Course is hereby accepted.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing agenda item seventy-five through seventy-eight shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing agenda item seventy-nine through eighty-eight shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Three forty-two.
For purple mountain majesty, above the fruited plain, America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and round thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.